Okay. This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on January 30th, 2024 at 5:32 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all of the participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. For the record, participating this evening are myself, Liz Klein, Chair, and Joe Fisher. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes, which I don't think we're prepared to do. We'll do that next week. Next on the agenda is the Lincoln Day proclamation. Lincoln Day is next Saturday, February 10th. So we will read into record the proclamation. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Lincoln Day proclamation. Whereas the Town of Hingham was settled in 1635 by a small band of Puritans, many of whom came from Hingham, England, and environs. And whereas among the descendants of those original settlers were two famous American public figures who shared the common family name Lincoln, as well as a common heritage. And whereas it is a longstanding Hingham tradition to honor and celebrate their birthdays, General Benjamin Lincoln, a lifelong Hingham citizen and a hero of the American Revolution, and Abraham Lincoln, our 16th president and the towering figure of the Civil War. And whereas we honor and celebrate the lives and deeds and all their complexity of the two Lincolns because of the incredible legacy of civic engagement and community building they have left for us.
And whereas in this year, 2024, we pay special honor to four centuries of our citizens, those famous like Benjamin Lincoln and Abraham Lincoln, and those unknown to history who worked in myriad ways to build and sustain this wonderful community of Hingham and the broader communities of state and nation. And whereas the preservation of community is a perpetual task in which each generation must fully participate. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby officially proclaim Saturday, February 10th, 2024, Lincoln Day. And finally, we urge each citizen to take to heart the examples of the two Lincolns and those of four centuries of Hingham citizens. And we urge each citizen to participate in some concrete way in the strengthening and preservation of this community of Hingham and the broader communities of state and nation for the generations which will succeed us. Given our hands and Seal of Hingham, this 30th day of January 2024, signed by Elizabeth F. Klein, the Chair, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey. So I would make a motion to proclaim Saturday, February 10th, 2024, as Lincoln Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill? I'm sorry. Bill's not here. I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Like autopilot. Okay.
Right.
Next on the agenda is review of FY23 fund balance memo. Michelle?
So I'll just ask Ann to join us at the table. So joined by Ann McNaughton, our new town accountant. So the fund balance memo is kind of an internal analysis that the accounting team conducts each year. And what it really is is a snapshot in time of mostly our reserve funds. So the most recent, we always do it as the fiscal year ended June 30th, so it's June 30th, 2023. And we did see an increase in fund balance between FY22 to FY23 of about $1.3 million. And this is due to a change in revenue over projections, some budget turnbacks from departments minus the use of fund balance throughout the fiscal year. So the chart here, I'm just going to kind of go over it at a high level, if people can see that. There are five different categories of fund balance. That's how the different pieces of it are classified. Our total fund balance is $49.8 million, and that's the one that saw a slight increase from the previous year. I think the part of it that usually we focus on is the unassigned fund balance piece. So per the town's financial policy, we try to maintain our unassigned fund balance between 16% and 20%. We hear often from the rating agencies, and we just went through this process with them over the last week or so, that they are typically looking for something closer to 30% for communities to maintain. But Hingham has other financial indicators that help us be able to use a little bit more of reserves as appropriate on one-time expenditures. So this year, our unassigned fund balance is about $33 million. That represents just under 20% compared to total annual expenditures, which again is the benchmark set by our financial policy. What Ann and I tried to do this year was be a little bit more specific in terms of showing what's in some of the other buckets of fund balance. So as you know, we created several different stabilization funds over the last year, and you can see that those are in the committed bucket of fund balance. So those funds are still in fund balance but are set aside for specific use. The CPC DS one is set aside to offset the tax impact of the two big building projects that are happening right now. And the Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund that we ceded with $1 million last year is set aside to help the town fill budget deficits and stretch out the time in which we may need the next override. What you see in a sign this year as well, so a few years ago, we started keeping track of the excess ambulance receipts so that we could use those to offset the capital purchase of an ambulance every two years through the fire department, and then that way kind of augment the capital budget. So those are some of the items I wanted to call out. You also see for the first time opioid settlement funds in the restricted category. We had not had anything in this category for a while. That's actually going to change and kind of get out of the general fund because the state just passed legislation that lets us keep track of it separately through a special revenue fund, which will just make accounting for it much more simple. But those are also restricted by the settlement agreements that the state and we signed on to in terms of how that can be used. So I think what many people are looking for in terms of some of the strategic decisions that we have to make or recommendations that we'll be putting forward through warrant articles this year is potentially using some of the excess unassigned fund balance for things like making another contribution to the Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund this year and potentially using some of it for special education out of district costs that we sort of carved out in the MOU and some of those other one-time items and future capital projects that we know are coming down the pike.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and thank you to Ann. I know this was a huge effort, and I certainly appreciate the methodology that you used and the repeatable process that we'll have going forward. So thank you for being very specific. I think it helps all of us. As far as the opioid settlement funds, so once these are expended, this will zero out, and then we'll see it within the operating budget going forward?
So I think what you'll see is, because this was as of June 30th, 2023, everything was still coming in through the general fund and would have needed to go through our free cash process. Now we're moving it all, or Ann's moving it all, to a special revenue fund, which is recently available as of December. So it just won't be part of the fund balance calculation anymore. And then we'll be coming back to the Select Board, the Select Board as the chief executive officer kind of has to approve the use of that. And so we anticipate coming back with Susan Sarnie from the Health Department to outline her plans, I think you guys are familiar with them, so that she can use the opioid settlement funds for the opioid coordinator and some of the other programs that she's putting in place to help with substance abuse issues.
If I could just add to that. So the amount shown for opioid settlement funds is not necessarily static. There's ongoing litigation. There may be other settlements. So there may be additional funds coming in. So this may not be the only time we see this.
That's right.
Right. And there's dollar amounts per year.
Right.
This isn't the total.
No, this represented what came in before June 30th, 2023, and included some receivables that the auditors included. So we're supposed to get funds each year for the next 15 or so years. So that amount will kind of go up and down in terms of what comes in and then in terms of how we spend it as well on those programs.
Right. Joe, do you have other questions?
I think, Michelle, you've anticipated my questions and really addressed them. I mean, this is exactly what we, the analysis that we're looking for. If you can just briefly explain what it means to be assigned versus unassigned.
Sure.
I mean, we use that nomenclature all the time, but just so everyone's clear about that.
Sure. So I feel like I should touch base on all of them then, because sometimes restricted, committed, and assigned all sound like the same things, like they're set aside for one reason or another. Assigned is mostly like our internal set-asides. It's things like encumbrances that the town accountant is able to do. So that's more our internal tracking of some of these funds that are tied to specific purposes. Committed is really like town meeting took a vote. So those are often the result of articles that have been approved in the past, like the stabilization funds. And then restricted is typically something larger, like mass statute restricts some of those funds, or in this case, there is a giant legal agreement that is designating how we can and cannot use those. So unassigned is really, it's the remainder of what's in fund balance. It's not tied to a specific use, and it's available for us to use in accordance with our financial policy.
Great. Thanks. Nothing else.
Okay. Could you just explain the, so the change in fund balance, I know you said it's attributed to three major categories. Could you just talk a little bit about the local receipts, why we saw such a big bump there?
Yep. I think the main driver in local receipts was our interest earnings, sometimes called investment income. It's just, it's a high interest rate market, and we borrowed a lot of money for the two building projects. So that combination was, meant that we pulled in more in terms of interest than we had anticipated. It's hard to rely on that year after year. But what you see in the front page is setting aside $1.3 million of that interest income because it was directly from the borrowings for Foster and Public Safety, and we feel that that should remain with the project. So we have some decisions to make about how to apply that to the projects to reduce the tax impact of them, to potentially borrow less going forward. But that's the main driver in local receipts there.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And in terms of the budget turnbacks, public safety was the largest, but that doesn't account for overtime costs, correct?
So these, what you see is a total of about $2 million in turnbacks last year, but I think it's important to note that that's after we pulled some money from unassigned balance at town meeting last year, as we do many years, to kind of fill some budget gaps at the end of the year. So we didn't really turn back $2 million. We turned back about 1.3 or so, 1.2 after that transfer. So it would have, I think, at least for the fire department, we were filling some overtime gaps using that transfer, but in both public safety departments with the vacancies and some of the difficulty recruiting, it's often, the turnbacks are often a result of vacancy money.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I mean, this is helpful because we have a lot of capital projects that we're looking at, and it's important to understand the funds that are available for the town. So thank you.
Absolutely. And I'm hoping we'll have money to put in the Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund. Any questions or comments from members of the public?
Let me look online real quick.
Okay. I don't see anyone. Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Michelle. Great job. Next on the agenda is harbor resiliency projects update. Turn it over to Joe to kick us off here.
Yeah, so we could have our consultants come up as well. This is an important step for the town, and I think we're going to hear and get a presentation of important information. One thing to keep in mind is that this is one step, and there will be future steps where we will be soliciting public input so that people's views, residents' views, are absolutely taken into account as we move forward. So with that, I will turn this over to Tom.
Sure. So thank you, Joe. This is a conversation that's been a long time coming, and frankly, has been had for over a number of years. The town has taken this up at several town meetings. The funding has been approved over the years. This is an update of what we've been doing since that's happened. We brought the entire team in, I think, here to help us walk through that process. From FOTH Engineering, we have Carlos Peña. From Sustainable Coastal Solutions, we have John Ramsey. Susan Murphy is our real estate legal counsel, and JR Frye, our town engineer, I think is here online. So we got the whole team to kind of walk us through what we've been doing and what the plan is. Carlos?
Good afternoon. My name's Carlos Peña from FOTH Infrastructure and Environment.
Before you go, if you can move the mic closer to you.
A little bit closer?
Oh, there we go. Yep. Thanks.
All right. Great. Good afternoon. My name's Carlos Peña from FOTH Infrastructure and Environment. I'm here with John Ramsey from Sustainable Coastal Solutions, and obviously Susan Murphy. Additionally, in our team is Christine Player, who's helping us out with the project, and we're also working closely with Jason Burtner from Coastal Zone Management on the project. We typically, well, we do meet on a monthly basis to assess progress on the project and budgets and tasks, make sure that everything keeps going in the right direction. The scope of work for the project, if you could put it on the air. Includes updating topographic surveys that we've done periodically over the years and assessing all the site conditions. In addition to that, John has prepared a coastal flooding assessment and coastal processes evaluation, which he'll present tonight. Going forward after this meeting, we will, we're looking at preparing resilient engineering alternatives and preliminary plans for the bathing beach areas, which will include the construction of dunes and coastal berms, the reconstruction of the town wharf in Three Oda Street, the reconstruction of a seawall at Veterans Park, and the reconstruction of Barnes Wharf, which is shown, which is highlighted on this project. In addition to this, there's an existing five-foot culvert which is impacted by tides, which connects through the parking lot down by the railroad tracks. That is something we're also going to take into account to make sure that if we put in some sort of storm gate, they can be closed off during coastal storm events. And the project is being designed in conjunction with the improvements at Three Oda Street and also with the Mass. 3A improvement project, which is upcoming also. So we're making sure that any work that's being performed is coordinated with all the entities that are stakeholders in the project.
Excellent. Sorry to interrupt, Carlos.
Sure, please.
We're having, well, we're having a little trouble hearing online. Is there anything we can do? Is it just the microphone, or should he?
No, the owl is here.
It's the owl? Should we try to get closer?
The owl.
Technology. Moving even closer to the mic would help.
Okay. Thank you. Is that better?
It's for the owl, not for the zoom.
Okay. No, hopefully that's better. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And I'll briefly go over the project scheduling and funding. The work started on June 14th, 2023. We expect to complete the work on July 31st, 2024. Included in that will be the preparation, submission of the MIPA Environmental Notification Form for the Selected Project Alternative. At this point, FOTH has a contract of $373,000. There's an annual town meeting authorization of $360,000. There's been a grant match, or a grant that was obtained from Coastal Zone Management of $268,000. At this point, we're at about 25% of the contract amount, which is in line with the amount of work that's been completed. And with that, I'll turn it over to John for his presentation.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I got this.
Okay. So hopefully everybody can hear me. So I'm here to basically talk about some of the first steps that we did, which are the coastal design guidance and sea level rise analysis. There's been a lot of work done in this area, obviously, over the years, but we want to take a fresh look at it and make sure that what we're doing is something that goes along with what we want to do, not only now, but in the future as we're moving forward. One of the things that, through this whole process, that we're looking at is designing sort of for the time period now, but having foundations set so that we can build up things higher when we need to as sea level rises. We all know that's going to happen. So as part of this, we're going to be, I'm going to be talking about sea level rise, but also wave analysis and what we need to do in order to achieve the flooding mitigation requirements as we move forward. I'll go to the next slide. So right now, the state has come up with a, back in 2016, they came up with an idea of what they wanted to project for sea level rise. It was a very conservative analysis. And again, it's a little bit, and I'll talk a little bit more about it in the next slide, but what they chose to do is a very, very high scenario, which is one of the darker blue colors, which would assume that we're going to have somewhere around eight feet of sea level rise by 2100. Now, as a conservative assessment, if I were designing a new sewage treatment plan for you guys, I would say yes, go with that conservative estimate. But right now, we have existing infrastructure, and what we're more looking at is trying to make sure that we're doing something that is what we're likely to see as opposed to worst-case scenario, is what could happen. So I can go to the next slide. And so just to give you an idea, what the state has indicated by 2020, we should have had about seven tenths of a foot sea level rise since 2010, and we've had about one tenth of a foot. So, you know, again, very, very conservative. It's a nice way of thinking about things, but as you go further into the future, those get further and further spread out, and you're designing something that's very conservative, but also something that's cost prohibitive for your existing infrastructure. So again, we wanted to back off and take a look at newer information. We can go to the next slide.
Before you do, you're using the word conservative, which could be interpreted in a number of different ways.
Not politically conservative.
No, not, I know it's not politically conservative, but, you know, often a conservative number is considered a low number. That's not what you're talking about.
That is not what I'm talking about. In this sense, what I'm referring to as conservative is something that is, in their sense, they looked at this as a statistical thing, and I don't want to spend too much time on it, but it's basically the 99.5% chance of not happening. And so it's a very high estimate, and the way I look at it is if you walked into a casino with $100, what are your chances of walking out with $20,000? I wish it was really high, but it's not. And so that's kind of where that estimate is at. It's at a very high end. And so again, when I'm referring to the term conservative in this case, from an engineering standpoint, conservative would be something that has a huge safety factor to it.
Right. So it's not the most likely.
Correct.
It's an estimate that would...
It's actually highly unlikely.
Yes.
Worst-case scenario.
Exactly. Okay.
And so, you know, since 2016, you know, the same authors have been working on this. These are national people, and the federal government just came out with a report in 2022. NOAA came out with one, and they came out with a very different estimate, much more liberal in that sense, much more in line with what we sort of anticipate as an expected value as opposed to a worst-case value.
Sorry.
That's okay. Uh-oh. So in that sense, what those curves show is that what they were looking at is specifically trying to narrow down the band going to 2050, because everybody's, you know, seeing, you know, the curves that everybody's using are all over the place. And what they wanted to do is get a best expected value out to 2050 and then carry that on from there. And so these are what the, you know, what the national government is using, and in this case, out by 2050, they expect 1.3 feet of sea level rise since 2000, which would be about one foot from now till 2050. So that's what we should expect as the actual likely sea level rise from now to 2050 is about one foot. So that's what we're using to design with because that's, you know, again, the best science that is available today. And so just looking forward, you know, it's kind of like banging your own drum, but this is something we've been using since 2011, and it just so happens, it happens to also agree with what NOAA is saying today. So this is, this is nothing new. Everybody's been looking at this type of thing, and again, if you're looking at expected values, this is what you should anticipate things being. And so when we're looking at designing out here, this is, you know, by 2030, we're expecting about four tenths of a foot. By 2050, one foot. By 2070, 1.8 feet. So again, that's, you know, that's not a small number. These are important numbers, but they are not as excessive as some of the planning stuff that the state has been putting out. Okay? Next slide. So one of the things we wanted to look at is all, and again, this is kind of hard to see, but we look at various places along the shoreline that we want to estimate what the wave climate is, very specific information, to make sure that we're giving you guys what you need for each section of seawall and beach area and dune area that we're looking at. Don't want to go into too much detail, but, you know, this is kind of, you know, the bathymetry is the blue, that's the water depths, and obviously, the green is the upland. Okay. Next slide. And so we go through an analysis, we look at, and these are actually offshore waves from the ocean, because some ocean waves do get into Boston Harbor, and some of the energy gets down here. This on the bottom is what we call a wind rose. This is just the percentage occurrence and velocity of all the winds that we've seen in Boston Harbor. We use all that information to put in computer models to come up with what the wave heights are at the site, what the worst-case wave heights are statistically, so that when we're designing something, we're designing it for what we consider the 100-year storm, which is pretty much the standard thing that we would use. And again, down here is just sort of the statistics of that, where we get our strongest winds, not surprisingly, out of the northeast. Not a surprise. And then this gives just kind of an idea of how we do our modeling. So we have a regional grid that includes all of Boston Harbor. We have the waves come in, and you kind of see what the results are down below. We're in very high waves, you know, over 15 feet during a storm, and then obviously, once they get inside the harbor, they're much smaller. Then we do a sub-grid of just the, you know, the area from, you know, hull coming over down into the Hingham Harbor area. And again, you see the wave heights decreasing as we get down here. And again, these scales are a bit different, but finally, we get a very small-scale grid just in the Hingham Harbor area, and we can see what, how the islands shade those waves as they come in. And again, you're seeing waves on the order of somewhere around three feet are your worst-case waves. And in general, at the peak of nor'easter, they're even smaller than that because your winds are coming out of the northeast, not directly out of the north. So we'll go from that. And so what we end up with is, in present conditions, and so I'm going to go through three different areas. This is our vertical seawalls. So vertical seawalls, right now, if we build them to around 11 feet, that works very well for protecting us for 100-year storm. Going into the future, obviously, a little bit more than an extra foot in 2050, and a little, you know, somewhere on the order of two feet addition to that in 2070. So again, all very doable, and all can be done with the foundations that we will be looking into making sure that these are developed on. There's another area along the shoreline where we're doing a revetment, which is just the sloped rock structure, and that has a little bit more run-up to it because waves run up slopes better, but they also dissipate energy. And in that case, we're looking at something on the order of, you know, 12 or 13 feet. And we could also modify that to put a seawall crest on it, so it doesn't have to be quite that high. But again, that's just, if we did a revetment, it would be somewhere around 12 feet if it had a slope of what the existing revetment has now. And then finally, we also, down at the park, we're looking at enhancing the dune down there. These dunes aren't really all that high, and when I'm saying 11, this is 11 feet mean sea level, basically. And so right now, they're on the order of nine anyways, so you're only looking at adding a couple feet to the dune, but making it wider so that during 100-year storm, part of it will erode, but you can easily put it back in place. And so again, down in that park area, we're looking at, you know, right now, we need it up around 11. Going in 2050, it's really not that much elevation increase because we can basically dissipate the wave energy in a dune better than you can on a structure, a vertical structure that reflects the wave energy, and then about 12 feet out in 2070.
If I can interrupt.
Sure.
Again, just for nomenclature, you have used the term 100-year storm. If you could just clarify what that means.
Sure. So 100-year storm is what we consider the storm of record in Boston Harbor. That height is about 10 feet above mean sea level right now, 10 feet. And so you guys had a 100-year storm back in 2018 in January. It was a very quick-hitting storm that nobody really thinks about that much. Everybody's always, you know, looks at the March storms as being much worse because they were long and destructive, but the actual 100-year storm happened in 2018, and the 78 storm was the one that was pretty close to it before that. So those are, it's a storm that's supposed to occur once every 100 years. And one thing I will point out, as sea level rises, if we're getting a foot of sea level rise, you know, you sort of need to redo those statistics. And the other thing that's important for everybody here to understand, because you're once every 100 years. And one thing I will point out, as sea level rises, if we're getting a foot of sea level rise, you know, you sort of need to redo those statistics. And the other thing that's important for everybody here to understand, because you're dealing with nor'easters as opposed to hurricanes, the difference between a 10-year storm and 100-year storm is only about one foot. So as, if we get one foot of sea level rise, all of a sudden, your 10-year storm, that storm occurs every 10 years, is your old 100-year storm. So it, it's important, there's not much difference. So that's why you guys are always seeing storms every year, and everybody's always saying it's the 100-year storm. It really isn't, but it's, it is, they're getting, they get close as, as our sea level rises.
Thank you.
And I think that's probably about all I have here. Yep. So that's, I mean, if you have any questions about any of the other analysis, I'm happy to answer those.
Do you want to start, Joe?
Well, so, you know, first, just thank you for the work. It's, it's important that as we move forward, whatever we do is grounded in science. And you are providing the science, so we, we do appreciate that. What, if, if we can, oh, there we go. What, what are the time, what is the timetable for next steps?
Oh.
Sorry. Next step is speak with JR.
Yes, Joe. So our next steps right now are really to prepare in earnest for this MEPA filing, because it is going to inform how we proceed in every measure. And as, as you're aware, and I hope the select board is aware, this is very much a project which is being closely monitored or evaluated by CZM. They participate with us on the monthly meetings. They're very involved with every aspect of how we're approaching this project. And, and so with that in mind, it is going to, we are going to be working hand-in-hand with them to arrive at our preferred solution. Now, once we're through the MEPA process, which is approaching the end of the summer, at that point, we should have a preferred alternative identified, and we will quickly move into design. At the same time, we will be looking at construction funding. So similar to the grant cycle, which we were able to secure the monies to offset the town's investment towards the design and permitting effort, we will be seeking construction funding such that while we are in the process of securing our final permits, be it the local Concom or Army Corps of Engineers, each element of that, once we've identified the particular elements that we're going to improve immediately upon. So in the, we've always considered that to be town peer as our first priority. Hopefully, if, if additional grant monies are forthcoming, we will be able to leverage that town peer allocation into the matching component towards a construction fund. Although we would have to go through the appropriate process to make sure that the town meeting vote is clarified to reflect that.
It looks as if we are designing not just town peer, we're designing for the entire waterfront. Is that, is that right?
That's absolutely correct. And it's even a broader scale than what we had originally contemplated when we looked simply at the seawall structures themselves, because now we're incorporating each of the dune elements and making sure that the entire coastline is resilient to the, to what we need it to be.
Right. And when we, when you speak of resilience, I assume we're not about, not only about talking about the water coming in, but also the water receding back-
Yes.
...and the impact that that has.
Yes. So we will be, as a general rule, once the, once the tide recedes, and, and once that storm surge recedes, it will all drain. But the, sometimes it, it's a matter of time. And so that also impacts our flood calculations. So earlier, Carlos talked about the addition of an additional tide gate, for example, that will go in the culvert underneath 3A. That tide gate would be, as the, as our current one is now, would be closed at a low-tide condition. And then that would provide a period of time for storage behind those structures, so that when the tide recedes on the harbor side, those gates can be lowered, and any stored volume of water can then be released.
Got it. Clearly, Hingham is not isolated. We've got neighbors. To what extent are we coordinating efforts, or working with them, them working with us? How is that coordination happening?
On this particular element, while we do have neighbors, this is a limited-scope project in areas that only directly affect Hingham. So if you were to go further up towards the Weir River estuary and towards Straits Pond, or were you talking about the, the private entities?
No, actually, I was, I was not talking about the private entity. I was, I was talking about the neighboring communities.
Sure.
The next part of that is, is going to be town versus private entities. But, but let, but I'm, I'm really looking at the broader picture.
Yeah.
I mean, I know CZM is, is here representing the state, and it, that's an input that we highly value. But there's, you know, the local communities north and south of us that, I believe have an impact.
So they won't have an impact on our particular efforts in this project, other than, to the extent that we can, we're going to be maintaining Route 3A as an open transportation path. And that would be for emergency and evacuation services. But even outside of this particular element of the project, there are, there are areas of 3A such as Broad Cove, which are relatively low-lying and have a probability of being impacted by high waters during the same kinds of storm events that would flood downtown. So these particular efforts are protecting, are primarily protecting the structures within downtown and our, and our public infrastructure that is downtown.
Can you shift now, really, to talk about public versus private infrastructure?
Yes.
Because we, the town does not control the, the entire waterfront.
That is true. So in particular, there is a, there's Bear Cove Marina, and there is also the Hingham Marina. And, is this, there we go.
Right.
So this marina here, we are working closely with Nick Bond, the owner, in part because we have to, because his, his seawall that partially protects his property is directly integral to town peer. So when we raise town peer, he has to also raise his at the same time. So he has his own engineer that FOTH is coordinating our efforts with, in, in making sure that there is a, that there's a seamless design that covers his property. As for the actual execution, he is responsible for making improvements to his property, to the extent that the town can, because it does benefit the public, we would apply on his behalf for grant funding and attempt to secure grant funding to assist in his construction as well.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, thank you for all the work that, that you've done so far, and thank you for giving us the update. It sounds like we, we've gotten good news in terms of the sea level projections, but I think we're concerned about the storms as well. And, and the 100-year storms, as you made the point, feel like they're even more frequent than every 10 years, and we're seeing flooding. So that's certainly top of mind for us and for, for our residents. So want to be sure that that's included in these, these projections and plans. Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Or I'll move to, I think Clark has his hand up. Okay. Clark?
Hi, Clark Fraser, 50 Vine Briar Circle. I'm member of the Hingham Sewer Commission and chair right now. This is not an official statement. And I just want to point out that we have a pump station in the parking lot close to the food center. And my concern is specifically, you talked about sea levels. If, if the water goes over the top of the road, either by the end or by runoff or combination, it was pointed out how long it would take to drain out, and I'm concerned about that specific scenario, that we would have to get some projection, how much we need to raise our infrastructure to, to survive that. So are you, do you have any projection how often a storm could get over the top at high tide? Because you just said-
I was on Rockland Street two weeks ago, when that was under about a foot of water, and that was not a good experience.
Hi, Clark. How you doing? So the, the primary solution to that is to directly seal up the pump station itself and prevent infiltration into it. Now, for a period of time, you might not have access to that pump station. Also, you have to make sure all of the electrical elements are protected, so that they aren't inundated. But on, we're, what we're really talking about is, especially for those elements that are close to the 3A elevation or grade, we're really talking about something on the order of three to nine hours of potential inundation. And it would go from shallow to maximum, and then back to shallow and, and draining. And so providing for that kind of protection is feasible, doable, economical to protect that kind of infrastructure. And if, if the water's over top of it, that does not put us into a failure condition.
Okay. Thank you, JR. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. Did you want to add anything else?
I think the only thing I would add to what JR said was, I think, you know, the whole concept here is, is to make sure that we're not getting flooded during, during those severe storm events. So if the water's not coming over the wall, we're going to a lot less water that's stored or need to be stored behind the wall. And everything that needs to be stored behind the wall, if the tide gate works the way that JR is talking about, what we're talking about, is that you, you basically at low tide, you close that gate. So now your whole estuary up there is a storage area. And I guess the thing is, if you look at Straits Pond up the way, that's exactly the way that is operated. And I've never seen anybody flooded on the backside of, you know, the beaches there, because the pond got too high. And they have a lot more water coming over their seawall than you guys ever experienced. So, you know, you, it is a, that storage area is going to be more than plenty to store the, whatever freshwater flooding you're going to have during a nor'easter.
And just to follow up, I mean, I assume that you are tracking the town resources that are potentially affected, the sewer, you know, being one, but there's, and those clearly are priorities for, for your, your work.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
When we, when we applied for the grant, in fact, it was a cooperative effort between sewer and engineering to try to get this grant. CZM made a particular selection and excerpted out the sewer scope of work, which was unfortunate. But we still feel that, we're still very grateful to CZM for the resources they provided to us.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with IBC Offshore Incorporated to supply the town with a Safe Boat 31 refurbishment for the Harbor Master. Kathy, we have Kathy Riley and Ken Corson. Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thank you.
So Ken, will your boats be okay as the sea rise?
Yes, they will float with it.
Are you responsible for making all of that happen?
I did start it like 10 years ago. I'm glad they're handling it.
All right. Do you want to explain to us what this contract is about?
Yeah. So this contract has two parts to it. The first part is to replace engines on Marine One. And then the second part is to upgrade and perform some maintenance on the boat in other areas, redoing the c-decking, some maintenance to the different engines onboard. It has, other than its operating engine, it has a generator. It also has a big diesel engine for the fire monitor. And there's various other types of things that need to be done. So both of those areas will be making improvements. The boat's now about 10 years, 11 years old, and it's, it's had engine upgrades along the way. But some of the other areas on the boat need to be upgraded and so forth. The one big thing about the engines now is, we used to use Evanrude. They've since gone out of business. We're making a switch to a different manufacturer, and it's going to require a little bit more work with re-rigging, the controls and everything like that, and also making some slight modifications to the transom.
Okay. Okay. And it looks like the term of the contract is, is through June 30th? So these will be ready for the summer?
Yes, this should be ready for the summer.
Okay. And can you just talk about the funding source?
Yeah. So there's two funding sources. We have a port security grant that we received a year or so ago, and that's for about $230,000. And then we have another appropriation from town meeting for about 75. We've already spent some of those funds on upgrading. Last winter, we upgraded the electronics onboard the boat. So we've, we've spent a small amount of those. And we'll still have some leftover funding after you sign this contract. And I anticipate that when the boat gets on site there, and they actually start working, we'll notice some other things that need to be addressed, or some areas might cost some more. And I'll either be back here with a change order, or if it's in the appropriate range, we'll be seeing Tom Mayo to adjust that.
Okay. Okay. But this is still within the capital budget from last, from the current?
Yes, it's within the budget.
Okay. Joe, any questions or comments?
Yeah, actually, it's probably for Kathy, because I noticed, and you probably saw, Kathy, the, the term of the contract here lists June 30th. The contract itself, it says August 31st.
Yes.
Two months difference.
I was just noticing that when you said that.
So what is, what is the correct date?
When I, it's August 31st. I, we had originally said that in the bid. And I, when I sent the contract with a June 30th date, the woman, the president of IBC, sent it back and said, "The, the solicitation said August 31st." And so she, I told her that I would change the date. So I must just have forgot to do the cover sheet to update that. I apologize.
But is that, is that the date it's expected to be done, or just basically the outside date?
I think it's the outlier date.
Okay, so-
We're, we're hoping that it's going to be sooner. And because it's two-tiered, right? We're expecting the motors in, I think it said, eight weeks of a lead time. So those will be, you know, fairly soon, relatively speaking. And then the interior sort of generator and things like that will be done. So that's why the dates-
I just want to make sure the timing will work for our Harbor Master. That's, you'd like to keep him happy. Okay.
It will work.
Need it for the summer.
Great. Yes. No other questions. Thank you.
Okay. So there were no other changes? And have they signed the con, they have they-
They have signed it. Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public?
With that, I would like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with IBC Offshore, Inc., to supply the town with a Safe Boat 31 refurbishment for the Harbor Master, in an amount not to exceed $133,356.84.
Second real call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm in, I as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is discussion and potential adoption of property assessed clean energy pace to finance clean energy projects. We have Laura Burns with us. I think Brianna, I think I saw her. Yes, Brianna online.
I see her. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
She's here. Yes. Thanks very much for putting us on the agenda. It's been some few months since we requested that you take a look into this program. So we really appreciate you taking the time. I don't have time to unfold to you tonight, the whole initiative that this camp program can be a part of, but I will have that opportunity when we return to talk about the light boards. I'm sorry, Laura Burns, 479 Main Street, for the light board.
You are the czar of the light board, aren't you?
I am not. I, I can assure you that I am not. I can assure you that I am not. We are very hopeful you'll take a positive look at this program because you do know that we have an initiative to encourage the development of large scale solar arrays around town. And we have been beginning with, hoping to begin with municipal properties. But recently, we've been looking for opportunities to branch out to commercial entities and approach them for, you know, partnering with a light plant over solar arrays or batteries. And this program you're about to hear about, in addition to everything else it does, will, could very well be a very key part of that. So that's why we're hoping we'll take, you'll take a good look at it. And I just want to turn this over to Brianna Bennett, the light plant's sustainability and communications coordinator, who's going to introduce the topic. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure, I'll, I'll keep it very brief. We have Wendy O'Malley on the call and I see Connor from Mass Development here. Mass Development runs the PACE program. PACE is Property Assessed Clean Energy Financing. We first had heard about this program in 2022 and we brought it to the light board as well as a few other committees, the Climate Action Committee and the Energy Action Committee for consideration. And now we're bringing it to you all. So if you have any other questions from the light plant, I'm here to answer them. But otherwise, I want to turn it over to Wendy because I know she has a great presentation for you all.
I want to thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Thank you to that Hingham Municipal Light Plant for inviting, facilitating this appearance. And thank you for the town for placing us on the agenda and for the consideration by the select board for Property Assessed Clean Energy Financing. I'm Wendy O'Malley. I'm Senior Vice President of the Green Financing Department at Mass Development. And I head up the Property Assessed Clean Energy Financing Program, which is a newer financing option that is allowed for commercial and industrial property owners in the Commonwealth to access funding for energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements. It's a unique option for property owners because it allows them to fund improvements and repay them via a Betterment Assessment that's placed on their property. I do have a presentation that I meant to bring up, so let me do that.
While you pull it up, I did not introduce myself. Brianna Bennett, Sustainability Coordinator from Hingham Light.
Can you all see that?
Yes.
Great. I'm going to go through these slides pretty quickly. Hopefully you know who Mass Development is. We are a state agency. We facilitate economic development among the, around the Commonwealth. We have a number of real estate and financing programs. You may have run into some of my colleagues with some of those other programs. But PACE, which I just started talking about, is a new financing option that provides a range of benefits to not just the property owners who are accessing the financing to improve their buildings related to the energy usage and the energy systems that are there, but also the municipalities in which they're located because they will have properties that are now using cleaner, less fossil fuel reducing, less fossil fuel consuming systems. And hopefully aligns with the sustainability initiatives that many of the municipalities have among the Commonwealth. It also helps with economic development in terms of improving that business or property owner's standing in terms of their finances because PACE requires property owners to identify improvements that pay for themselves over time with the identified energy savings. And that's the uniqueness to this program where their savings identified would be redirected to repay the financing through the Betterment Assessment that is levied on the property. Lenders like it because it's a senior secure financing that allows them to fund improvements that improve a property owner's cash flow. Mortgage holders like it because it improves their asset value. And it's a 20-year long-term financing. So it really provides a host of benefits to the property owners accessing it in terms of the longer term to repay. This is a newer program to Mass Development. But there are a number of states who have already had active PACE programs. And you can see $5.2 billion has been financed for just over 3,100 projects to date. Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New York, Maine, New Hampshire all have programs in development or are active. And as I mentioned, the, the PACE program's a newer program. It was passed initially for existing buildings in the Commonwealth. And just recently, last summer, we expanded to include new ground up construction. So now we are, we have an eligible pool of properties that goes for the, the range of commercial properties available under the existing and ground up construction. We also have 13 capital providers that serve the program currently. That number is increasing. Those are lenders who are interested in funding the projects. And we have all of the details for the program approvals, including the technical and financial guidelines listed on our website at Mass Development. There are a number of requirements under the statutory law that need to be met before an application and a financing can be approved. And we work in consultation with the Mass Department of Energy Resources in terms of those approvals. This is a key slide in terms of the municipal consideration. So I mentioned that this is repaid via a Betterment Assessment that's placed on the property. And under the laws of Massachusetts, a Betterment Assessment has to be billed and collected in the same manner as property taxes. So the municipality, in this case, would be opting in and agreeing to bill a Betterment Assessment and pass it through to Mass Development. And we have a paying agent who actually intakes the money. And then we pass it through to the capital provider who financed the project for the, for the property owner. So Mass Development is a pass through as well as the municipality who is collecting, billing and collecting the Betterment Assessment. There's no financial obligation if the funds aren't received for the municipality to disperse any PACE assessments. Only if you collect the assessment would you be required to then send the funds to Mass Development. And I already went over the eligible properties, so I won't spend much time on this other than to say there is a residential eligibility for multifamily, five units or more. So in, in, under the PACE statute, that is also another eligible type of building. And pretty much energy-related systems are what generally qualify under the PACE program. Energy efficiency and renewable energy are the two buckets we like to, we like to describe here in PACE. And I'm sure you're familiar with many of these items that are here. What's nice is that you can finance and pace the ancillary items that are needed to maybe install that measure. So in, in the case of solar panels, often a property owner is told they may need to replace the roof before they can install solar panels. The PACE program allows you to fund not just the solar panel, but also the roof replacement. So it allows a owner to undertake a comprehensive look at their building and really invest in it and allow them to install the items that make it necessary for that improvement. We have just three examples quickly of financings that have been closed under the PACE program. This was out west in Greenfield. This was a deeper retrofit that was closed for $450,000. This was a vacant space in downtown Greenfield where the owner did a full renovation and used PACE financing to pay off this shorter term construction financing that he used to originally renovate the building. There is a mortgage holder consent that I will mention was obtained from Berkshire Bank as required under the statute. And this was another project, project we did in East Boston, more typical of a warehouse-type facility near the airport that housed a number of retail tenants. And this commercial property owner, it allowed him to, it allowed them to preserve their capital expense budget where they were able to purchase all the equipment at once instead of replacing each piece as it failed. They also added a number of improvements, new LED lighting, new roof. And this was out on an adjacent parcel. And so this was a larger financing, same owner. We also obtained mortgage holder consent, so three different mortgage holder consents from three different banks. And what was interesting was this included a ground lease with a state entity who had to consent to allow the PACE financing to occur on this property. A number of these I've gone through, but we're here tonight because there is a municipal opt-in requirement under the PACE statute that requires each municipality to opt in once through a board of the, a vote of the select board or city council. That's done through a one, a resolution. And I think we've sent that along and hopefully you have that already. And these are the statutory requirements in terms of the considerations that Mass Development and the Mass Department of Energy Resources need to review and, and make sure are met in terms of the PACE guidelines. This is a third-party voluntary financing. It is not currently funded through state funds. This is through third-party capital providers that a property owner selects to work with. And one other unique item that I, I should mention in terms of PACE is that if the PACE financing has not been paid off and the property is sold, that PACE assignment, a PACE assessment and the PACE lien travel to the next owner. They automatically transfer. So this is financing that is characterized as being tied to the borrower. I'm sorry, tied, tied to the property, tied to the land, running with the land versus financing that is tied to the borrower. And we have 73 municipalities that have authorized PACE to date. I'll give you a minute to look at this list. So we have some large municipalities, some smaller ones all across the Commonwealth who have, who have opted in for a variety of reasons. Most of them to align with sustainability initiatives that they have either in place or that they intend to adopt, but also to promote economic development or because they've had a property owner who has requested to have PACE accessible in their community so that they can use it. And coming up on the end of the presentation, this is a rather complex slide, but I think it's nice because it shows the different entities and the ways they participate in a PACE transaction. This specifically shows the documents that would need to be executed under the PACE agreements by Mass Development, the lender, the mortgage holder, if there is one, the property owner and the municipality in which that property is located. And that is my contact information. I will stop there and I'm happy to talk, take any questions from the select board this time. And hopefully I didn't go through that too quickly.
Well, that was very helpful. Thank you, Wendy. Certainly, it sounds like an interesting program and is aligned with our climate goals as well as economic development goals. Can you outline if there are any actual costs to the municipality?
So there is no cost to the municipality in terms of any charges or fees that we would charge the municipality. There is staff effort that's needed to bill and collect the assessment. So I, and there's not a fee charged, but I, I would say that that is the, the, the one item that I'll, I'll say is, I don't want to describe it as a cost, but there is staff. Yes, the effort.
Understood. Joe, any questions or comments?
I do have a couple. First is if we can get some light, that would be really helpful. So I'm wondering, have, have there been communities in Massachusetts that have looked at this and decided not to move forward?
We have not heard of municipalities saying that they do not want to move forward. We do have municipalities that have taken time to consider the program and are moving it forward at their own, in their own timeframe. So we haven't had any outright rejections, no.
Laura, do you know, have there been property owners in Hingham who, who have requested that we implement PACE?
Not to my, not to my knowledge. And I think it would be very unlikely that they would know about this program.
I was going to ask.
It's going to require some marketing, which I think the, at least as regards to solar development, the light plant is interested in taking that on. But of course, we can tell people about the whole range of services available.
So the, the financing is really done through this Betterment Assessment. When the homeowner makes the payment to the town, and the town is, part of that is the Betterment Assessment. Do you know, is that treated as a tax deductible expense? Like your property tax is up to a certain point you can deduct. Is this considered the same, in the same category? Do you know?
If, I think that question is directed to me. The, so the assessment. The assessment is secured by a lien that is assigned at closing from the municipality to Mass Development and then automatically assigned to the third-party capital provider. So they hold the lien and because the Betterment Assessment is essentially a pass-through, where you're just collecting it, passing it through, the municipalities that, that, that are collecting those assessments are not liable and are not recording it as a, as if it was a commitment on your books.
But for, for the homeowner, I didn't know if it was treated as a property tax payment for tax purposes.
So it is, it is an assessment that's, that's placed on their property and the capital provider holds the right to enforce, under the scenario of a default, that build an uncollected assessment. So it's, it, it has senior standing above a mortgage holder, but it is junior to any municipal tax lien. So we come after the municipal tax. You know, in this case, if there was a municipal tax that was overdue, municipality is still senior. We come, the, the PACE capital provider would fall after that.
So that, that is, that's another question I've been asked. So you're getting mortgage consent because this is now a priority above the mortgage, which is why you need the consent of the mortgage holder. But again, what I was asking is not the priority, but whether or not this is classified for tax purposes as a real estate tax.
I, I would, I would need to defer to the property owners, financial folks. I don't, I'm not a tax, I, I'm not privy to that. I can tell you that it's considered an assessment. And so in terms of the treatment, it's, it, that's why it's allowed to travel with the property.
Yeah, I understand it runs with the line. And so, so this is an option that the homeowner would have to basically finance and approve it for their, for their property. Have you done a comparison as to the interest rates that are available to the homeowner through PACE versus doing non-PACE capital financing?
Yeah, so there is, I just want to clarify, this is a voluntary financing program for commercial and industrial property owners, not homeowners. So this is not a residential program. So just, I need to make sure that's clear. In terms of the financing, so the, the interest rates are competitive. The property owners, as I described, selects the lender that they want to work with and they agree to the interest rates. They are on par typically with bank rates that are being offered for direct loans for these types of improvements. But typically, those loans have shorter terms in terms to repay. But there can be situations in bigger developments where there's mezzanine effect, mezzanine financing, equity financing. If those are in play, then you definitely would see, I would say, savings versus those type of financing rates. So it does depend on what your alternate option is.
So one of the goals of, in Hingham is to really improve and enhance commercial property development here. And this may be a question for Art, but is this something that you think would assist the town's ability to get these projects moving?
If I may, I would describe it as another tool in our toolbox. Hingham is 90% residential. We're certainly looking to change that percentage a bit, given our conversations about promoting development. And this will just give us another, another lever to address obstacles that we might identify as we talk to investors.
I guess what I'm asking is, have we heard this from any, from any of the folks that we've spoken with? That, hey, wouldn't it be great if Hingham had the PACE program?
At this point, we have not.
Okay, great. And I know, Laura, there's been very little marketing, so I'm not taking that as a negative. It's more of a lack of information.
It's a pretty new program. So in turn, you know, in terms of a, a four-year-old state program, I think 73, you know, municipalities uptake is not bad.
Yep. And I guess my final question would be for Tom. Have you looked at the mechanics of making this work for the town, assuming that we opted in? And, and then we actually had a property owner who wanted to go forward? Do we have the infrastructure? Do you have the bandwidth? Are there costs that you need to consider before we say, go for it?
I don't think that it would be overwhelming for our treasurer's office to process all of this, unless Michelle disagrees. But there's nothing here that seems alarming to me. It would be a little bit more work for that office for sure, but I think they're up to the task.
Great, thank you.
Obviously, we know this is a new program and it's just, it's in the kind of infant stages of being communicated and advertised, it sounds like. But do you have a sense, Laura, or kind of other communities in our region? I don't, I didn't really notice many South Shore communities on the list. I did see Plymouth. But are you aware of other communities in our area that are looking at this?
We could ask them to put that slide up again. So I was, interestingly, I was looking for people in our twenty-town comparison list. And I did, you know, I did see Concord and Wellesley. I did not see Belmont, but we could.
Yeah, we were looking for Hall, Norwell, you know, something around here. A big rock lineup.
If I could add, you know, we don't market a program until it's available in a municipality. We don't want to put you in a position where, you know, we're telling some business owner that something's available when it's not. So it's a little bit of a situation where we can't market the program and let them know it's available in your community until you opt in. That's just, that's just how we tried to work the program. Second, with the expansion to new construction, new construction has a very long lead time in terms of lining up the financing. And with the rise in construction costs, the rise in interest rates that we've seen in the last year, that's created an immediate need in terms of new construction development or just, you know, renovations, but construction lending. There are gaps that need to be filled for developers that are finding that their original commitments aren't high enough to fund the full construction of their developments. They often lock in their financing way ahead of really the process where you're actually knowing that they're putting shovels into the ground. So allowing the community to offer this will allow developers then to consider it as part of their financing stack and really in the design phase of their buildings, because this is where they're considering these improvements and whether to go above the just standard that is maybe required by law. So if you really do want to incentivize property owners into doing the cleaner, greener option to align with maybe what the municipal light plan is offering for any energy efficiency or renewable programs, this is the time to let them know that this tool is available. Letting them know that it's available in two years will then not allow you to have those projects that are ready to go soon or even trying to address the gaps in funding to use pace. So I think that's, that's just the one point I'd like to add.
I guess one question is, looking at the downside, is we have, have a developer, they do a project and then it fails. Often what may happen is either they declare bankruptcy or the project is turned over to someone else. In this case, the obligation that is guaranteed by the betterment is, will have to be borne by the new purchaser. And will that discourage the next purchaser from coming in because they can't escape that, that financial obligation?
There is an option to prepay the remaining balance in full as a payoff. So in terms of foreclosure scenario or someone purchasing the property, if that scenario develops, I can't speak to their appetite, but I can speak to the appetite for taking on the assessment and lien. But I do know it allows the property to install improvements that increase the building's future value and decrease their expenses. So we think it puts the property in a better position for whatever the future may be in terms of its attractiveness, I'll say, as, as a property.
And Laura, has the Light Board voted on this?
Yes. Some time ago.
Great. Are there any questions or comments for members of the public? Are you ready to take a motion?
So I guess our question, my question is, do we want to, and this is the first presentation I've had on this, do we want to take a week or so to consider it before voting?
I'm assuming there's no real urgency because there's not a pending project. Is that right? So if we took another.
There's not a pending project, no.
Okay. So if we took another week or two, that would be okay.
Right. The urgency is to not let this die. We need to move forward. We get that.
You said it.
And so it's, it's my goal to make sure we make a considered decision. I'm not hearing anything that would be negative. I just like the opportunity to look at this a little deeper.
Sure.
And I know that the folks from Mass Development will be available if any questions arise that we, you know, you need to settle before you can, you know, approach a vote.
Okay, excellent.
Yes, if anyone has any follow-up questions and take as much time as you want, we don't want the town to opt in unless they feel fully comfortable.
Excellent, thank you.
Laura, do you know, the vote language that we have, is that the statutory language that we need to implement this?
I can't answer that because I'm not sure where it came from. Brianna, do you know that? Oh, okay. That's a good sign.
Okay, good, okay. Great, thank you.
So we will vote at a future meeting and it will stay top of the list.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura.
And thanks to the folks from Mass Development for being here.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Brianna.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, discussion and potential vote regarding assignment of Hill International Incorporated to Lero Program and Construction Management, P E P C. Do you want to present this, Tom?
Sure. So Hill International is our owner, project manager for the Public Safety Facility project. And they've merged with another company and this is an assignment of that contract to the larger firm.
Yes, and we heard this last week. We wanted some additional information, so we felt confident with the financial due diligence that was done. I believe we received that information. Do you feel comfortable moving forward?
Yes, I reviewed the information that came in and I'm comfortable moving forward with Lero.
Okay, I am as well. I will take a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator chief financial officer to sign the consent to the assignment of Hill International, Inc. to Lero Program and Construction Management, P E P C, in the form attached heretofore.
Second roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well. Passing unanimously. Thank you for everyone's patience with that. Glad we're moving forward. Okay, next on the agenda is to sign agreements with National Water Main Cleaning Company, Incorporated, Williamson Pump and Motor Incorporated, and Rosano Davis Incorporated for emergency pump station repairs at 176 Downer Avenue. Hi, welcome.
We have Randy online and Steve Dempsey is here to walk us through this.
So we have a station emergency that needs rehab and these three companies that I presented to you are going to work in concert to get that done. Williamson Pump and Motor is going to take care of all the control issues and I can get into any details that you need. National Water Main is going to rehabilitate the wet well and Rosano Davis is going to facilitate bypass pumping.
Do you have any questions?
No, I have reviewed, I have reviewed the document. I'm satisfied.
I have as well. And you're comfortable working with these?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. Randy, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you, Steve.
We know you're good.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the public?
So I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with National Water Main Cleaning Company to perform wet well rehab at 176 Downer Ave. in an amount not to exceed $126,400.
Second roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Williamson Pump and Motor to provide emergency sewer pump station repairs at 176 Downer Ave. in an amount not to exceed $111,586.40.
Second roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well.
And finally, I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Rosano Davis Sanitary Pumping, Inc. to provide pump truck rentals for the emergency sewer pump station repairs at 176 Downer Ave. in an amount not to exceed $40,800.
Second roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you for managing all of this, taking care of it. Thank you, Randy. Okay, next on the agenda is notice regarding a select board meeting to be held on February 7th, 2024, 6 o'clock PM regarding the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article BB Naming of New Elementary School. Tom?
So this is just a notice for our, the policy that we signed that requires us to widely advertise this, this issue. So this is just a simple step in that widely advertising, whatever, requirement.
Officially notice that February 7th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, we will be discussing naming of the new elementary school.
And I assume this is posted on the town website?
It is.
It will be, okay.
Okay.
Potato, potato.
All right. Next on the agenda, 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussion, Article EE Transfer Harbor Revenues to Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund. Ken, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure. This article will allow town meeting to decide if they'd like to transfer additional harbor revenues that are not already routinely transferred into the waterways fund. So presently, every year mooring revenues and half of vote excise taxes automatically go into the waterways and improvement fund. This will just allow the other fifty percent of the vote excise tax and any other revenues that the Harbors Masters office brings in throughout the year to be also transferred into the waterways fund. This fund we try to build up for primarily for dredging, which we do every ten years. It also does help with the Harbors Masters division's capital improvements. And we also try to make sure that we have at least $250,000 in there as a reserve for any unforeseen issues. The reserve is well above that right now. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's well above the two and it's over a million, I believe. So that's what this warrant article will allow the town to consider, to move those funds that aren't already appropriated to the waterways improvement fund, to put those in there. Every year, the number could, can vary somewhere between maybe fifty to as high as maybe eighty. I don't know what that number would be yet.
Okay, so this will be the total vote excise?
Yes, so that will no longer be in the vote. So.
Right, the other half would be. And if this was this fiscal year, it could be transferred with the end of, or whatever comes in, in terms of vote. And the current balance is just under $2 million.
Do you have any questions?
I got a question.
All right. Do you want to keep going? I have a lot of other questions.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. Next is Article J, Center for Active Living Revolving Fund.
Hi. Hello. How are we? I noticed I'm in two places at once, so feel free to eject me from the office downstairs. So this Article J regarding the Center for Active Living Revolving Fund comes following the request and unanimous vote, thank you so much, at the November 7th select board meeting to rename our senior center facility to the Hingham Center for Active Living. And this is following a years-long community-wide needs assessment and a resulting rebranding project. So Article J will provide consistency internally and externally, replacing the use of elder services and the term senior center within the town's relevant general bylaws, letterhead, website, and so on. This article also addresses renaming the Senior Center Building Committee. And these amendments are more than changing the sign over our door. It's orienting town government and residents to a Center for Active Living construct as we move forward with exploring our expansion, renovation, and new build options. So this is just the next step in the phase that we've been working on for a couple of years down at the center and we're asking for your support on behalf of the Council on Aging for Article J.
Okay. And there is a specific amount, the eighty thousand?
So that is specific to the revolving fund, rather. So each year, town meeting has to vote on the expenditure cap for that account and this year follows the last couple of years where we've requested the cap to be made at eighty thousand dollars.
So that eighty thousand is not associated with the name change?
It is not, but the recreation revolving account title is.
Exactly.
Got it, okay. Any other questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay. All right, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Article T, Transfer from Capital Stabilization Fund for Repairs for 30 Summer Street.
Sure, so this is an article, the Capital Stabilization Fund is a fund that we initiated last year. We seed that fund each year through our surplus supply auctions. There's approximately $28,000 in that account right now. We would like to allocate those funds through this article for the purposes of repairing, of funding repairs necessary to the new property that we purchased with last year's town meeting authorization at 30 Summer Street to make it as functional generally as it needs to be. There's about $21,000 to $25,000 worth of existing quotes for work there. I think that those are early quotes. By the time we get around to doing this, obviously, we'll need to get fresh quotes. The $28,000 would almost definitely be sufficient to do the work that needs to be done, again, to bring that facility up to speed.
I'm coming along. I walked 30 Summer Street. I agree with the need for this and no questions.
Okay. All right, there you go. Next is Article X, Sale of 8 Short Street.
Bear with me, I'll speak to this briefly. This will be building a little bit on past conversation about this just a week or so ago.
So was that a play on words? You were speaking briefly about Short Street?
Never intentional.
Okay.
Have the opportunity just to share a little background, certainly answer your questions and hopefully support any consideration you give to recommend favorable action. And I've got a presentation here and I just want to thank Andrew Young, our historic preservation lead, who not only provided the backbone of this presentation, but some important background. The article itself deals with a number of elements. This is the article in full here. I will not read it in full, but the intent is to, is to request town meeting to authorize but not require the select board to sell the property with all buildings located at 8 Short Street for any use allowed or permitted under applicable zoning, subject to a preservation restriction, to be held by a qualified government body or qualified charitable corporation or trust, which the select board is authorized to approve except on terms and conditions the select board deems best interest, in the best interest of the town, and to deposit proceeds into the Capital Stabilization Fund for addressing capital, the town's pressing capital needs. Just a little bit of background, this building is probably familiar to anybody who spent time in Hingham, built in 1857, first used as the Hingham Center School, relocated to Short Street and served as the town's central fire station from the late 1890s through 1942. Was the home of the World War II rationing board and then converted to the Tree and Park Barn in 1947. It's been under leased for many years and it is listed on the inventory of historical, architectural, and archaeological assets by the town as well as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Taking a little bit of a deeper dive, that historic building rests on a .2 acre lot in Hingham Center. The building has a combined two-floor gross space of about 3.3 thousand square feet. It includes, also includes a basement and an adjacent garage. At this point, only the first floor is occupied. The second floor is used for storage. That particular parcel lies in the Business A District, which is shown in the pinkish area on the lower image. And in that, in that, in that district, retail and office are permitted uses. Another potential use would be a combination of commercial and residential, commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor, which is allowable under a special permit. Our assessed value, at least as listed in our GIS database, is 515, combined for land and property. And while, while certainly an important historic structure and the strategic location in Hingham Center, it has some challenges, like any building does, has very limited septic service, it has a 200 gallon per day system, has an aging roof, which will require attention, and certainly exterior paint and woodwork, which is something that we have looked at in the past, we've brought to the community. we have, uh, looked at in the past, we've brought to the Community Preservation Committee and had some funding lined up to address that particular need. So what's the rationale for doing this or for proposing the option of selling the property? It's a small parcel, the town's owned it for many years, but there's no clear path to a town use, uh, given the, the, the building shape, the size of the building, as well as the shape of, of, of the property. And there, there are certainly important benefits to a sale. A sale to a, a highest bidder will bring revenue to the town. It also eliminates a, a, a maintenance liability for the town. By moving the property off of our books, uh, we'll be able to focus our limited capital resources in other properties. But it's important to keep in mind that in doing so, the maintenance responsibility will, will pass to a, a private owner, and through active use, there's great prospect that the building will be maintained well and under a, a preservation restriction, uh, continue to, uh, contribute to the, the sense of place that's, that's really unique for, for Hingham Center. And we are optimistic that over time and with other uses that are active, that the property value will appreciate and, uh, contribute to rising tax revenues. Just a little bit on a preservation restriction, I know that's something that's a, a little unusual in, in our discussion here, but a preservation restriction can be placed on any asset in the state, whether building, land, or other entity, under Chapter 184. The language of a preservation restriction must be approved by the Mass Historical Commission, but it's typically drafted by town council. And, uh, in conversations that, uh, we've had with the Mass Historic, the recommendation is that the town would hold the, the, uh, the preservation restriction. Mass Historical is certainly a, an entity that does that, but they typically focus their limited resources on properties that are listed on, on the National Register of Historic Places, which is not, uh, our building is, is not on that list. There are nonprofits that could hold a restriction, but oftentimes, they look for an endowment, which would contribute to the project cost and may not be considered ideal by the, uh, the buyer. So I, I will leave it at that, and I, I welcome any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I just, just have a couple. Um, do we know how, uh, how much the preservation restriction would affect the sale value of the property? I'm, I'm assuming it would diminish the value.
Well, that's, that, that's an interesting question, and I, I think we're finding that there's, there are a, a couple of pieces to this. As you know, we've completed an appraisal. That appraisal reflects, uh, two, two, uh, two scenarios or disposition scenarios. One, where the property would be essentially sold as is, uh, to be used in any way that, uh, is consistent with current zoning. And the other would be with a preservation restriction with uses consistent with zoning. Our appraisal certainly shows that there's a gap between those two, where a preservation restriction, uh, certainly reduces the appraised value. We have had some conversations with, uh, other people. We brought a, a realtor through the property who, uh, is optimistic that a list price for the property would be significantly above the appraised value with a, with a preservation restriction, which gives us some opt, optimism that it could sell at a significantly higher price.
Um, right, so I, I think the documents show it's a little under $200,000 would be the negative impact, based on, on the figures here.
That, that's the delta we're seeing, yes.
Um, have we considered this as a possibility for affordable housing? Would, would this even fall in the realm of something that we should consider for affordable housing?
We've had some conversation about that. Given the, the zoning that's available in Business A, it's possible that, uh, a property could, um, include a commercial first floor with a residential second floor. Uh, a full residential option is, is not permitted under current zoning. I think another constraint is the, uh, the, the current state of the, uh, septic system at 200 gallons per day. Uh, we think it could support one floor of retail, as paired with a, a second floor of, uh, residential at, at, at the level of one bedroom, but it would not be big enough to support more bedrooms than that.
Are, are the properties there all on septic or are some on sewer? Do, do we know?
My understanding is this area is not served by sewer.
Yeah, I, I didn't look at them that, okay. And what are the questions?
Excellent. Um, thank you, Art. I, um, this is certainly something that we talked about last week, was recommended, um, by the Sustainable Budget Task Force, and I see it as a, a good revenue option, certainly something to, uh, look into further and do some more due diligence. The realtor that I spoke with was, as Art said, very optimistic about, um, the value and felt that even with the, um, the restriction, the preservation restriction, that, that wouldn't have so much of a negative impact as we were expecting because being in Hingham, being, especially in that part of town, it's expected. Homeowners are, want to live in the historic district and have these beautiful historical homes, so, um, that was not as, as negative as I think we were originally thinking.
One other question. Um, what's parking like for this property?
It's.
Are there, how many, is it two spots? I don't know how many spots are available.
I don't have that, I don't have that in front of me, but certainly a limited number.
Hi, I'm Dick. We're on the tenant here. I just happened to know because when I first got my lease that we had to go through that, there are six.
Six. Wow, okay, great. Thank you.
Um, just a question for Michelle, the, um, if there are, the proceeds would be deposited into a capital stabilization fund, have we considered other options for that, or do you think that is the best place that these funds would be?
Um, you can, you can do other things with them, but the sale of property is constrained by law, so I, I, well, don't quote me on it, but there are cer, there are only certain ways we can spend that money, and I think capital qualifies for that, so it seems like a logical place to put them, but, um, but we don't have to.
Okay.
Actually, I did have one more question, which the gentleman in the audience sort of prompted me to, uh, to raise, which is, um, what are the views of the current user of the property in terms of whether or not this is a desirable property to sell and that whether this is the time to put it on the market, and if there's any interest?
You're asking him, or you're asking?
I'm asking Art if you've heard response to that, and if not, you can certainly turn it over to whomever you'd like.
I, I think the tenant might be best positioned to speak for himself.
Okay. Do you want to? Can you just come up to the microphone, Dick, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear.
You weren't taking notes. Now, I did, um, what, what is your, um, view in terms of, uh, whether the town should be selling the property? Are, are you interested in purchasing it? Would you, do you think this is a, a good time, bad time to make these decisions?
Well, I think, um, I, I think it's an excellent time if, if I'm able to buy the property.
Good answer. Okay, but it is a property you'd be interested in?
Oh, very much so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's worked out really well for me. I like it pretty much.
And have you been constrained by the septic system there?
No, I haven't.
Great.
It's, it's worked out well. Apparently, um, what Art had said, um, that the, the, the flow rate on the septic system, according to the engineer, is, um, sufficient to support the, um, my little retail, my little shop, plus, in the event, it could also support a, uh, one bedroom on, on the second floor.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Mind if I just add something?
Sure.
So I just want to point out to listening public that this is an article to authorize but not require the select board to enter into this disposition, um, and it would, the terms of such disposition, you would probably set at the time you, when you issue the RFP. So we won't have those specific terms at the time this decision is made, but we'll know the, the general concept and, um, and it's not, again, not authorize, it's authorizing but not requiring the select board to act.
Correct. Good point. Okay. Any questions or comments for members of the public on any of the warrant articles?
Then I'm prepared to make a motion, um, to recommend favorable action on Article EE.
Second. Roll call vote, right? You have to do them separately, I think. Okay, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article J.
Second. Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article T.
Second. Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well.
And I move to recommend favorable action on Article X.
Second. Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well. Keep asking honestly. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for being here. All right. Next on the agenda is.
One sec. What are you concerned with?
I know, I did X.
Just X, right?
Yes.
Did we miss one?
I had you head all four.
Uh, EE, J, TX.
Yes.
Okay. Next is a joint session with the Community Preservation Committee, an advisory committee to discuss warrant Article L, Community Preservation Committee Recommendations. So we have, um, our CPC members have been sitting here quietly and plainly. We'll give everybody a minute to find their seats. Okay, all right, we'll take a.
Take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess. Okay. Hello, good evening, welcome, everybody. This meeting of the Select Board on January 30th, 2024 is called back to order from recess at 7:18 PM. Do you want to call ad com to orders?
Um, do I need to read the statement, or can I adopt it at this moment?
You can adopt what I read at the beginning.
Okay. So I'd like to call the ad com meeting to order at 7:18, um, and I, we are all in the room.
Excellent. Do you want to? Julie?
Um, CPC did not have a quorum.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. All right. Do you want to, who's starting? Do you want to kick us off, Julie?
Sure. Hey, everybody, I'm Julie Straley. I'm Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and with me here is Erin Kelly, Vice Chair of the CPC, and also joining us from our committee remotely is Vicky Donlin. And I think that's it from anyone on the CPC. So, anyway, I'm here tonight to present to you the recommendations that the Community Preservation Committee have voted on to send to town meeting. So under the Community Preservation Act, CPC's charge is to make a recommendation to annual town meeting on how to spend any Community Preservation Act funds. To that end, our committee's nine members have been meeting since September to review preliminary and final applications to make final recommendations. And I want to thank the committee members who serve, uh, choose to serve on the Community Preservation Committee. And, uh, most of them, we had everyone come back this year to serve on the committee except one member who moved away, so that is great to have that continuity. So, on the next slide, um, just a quick review for those who are new to this process. The Community Preservation Act was passed in Hingham in 2001, and the first grants were voted by annual town meeting 2003. CPA funds and its sources are completely separate from Hingham's operating budget. The sources of funds are a combination of a 1.5% surcharge on Hingham real estate tax levy against real property, plus a distribution from the Commonwealth's Community Preservation Trust Fund. Historically, we've received, uh, contribution from the state trust fund as high as 30 to 35% of our surcharge total, but this, this year, the, uh, percentage is 21%, and that ca, state calculation is based on last year's town 1.5% surcharge. So Community Preservation Act funding is broken into four categories: open space, affordable housing, historic preservation, and recreation, which is a subset of open space. There are minimum distribution requirements of 10% of annual budget across three categories: open space, affordable housing, and historic preservation. If there's a large request that is deemed incredibly important and timely, the CPC and the town can act upon that by, um, borrowing at annual town meeting to help pay for the project. So future CPA budgets will include debt service on any kind of project like that. So one project for which we still have to set aside funds for payoff on a schedule is the purchase in 2016 from annual town meeting of 49-plus acres of land off of South Pleasant Street, referred to as the Laner Property. So the purchase of that land was $5 million. The CPC borrowed $4.5 million, and it's being paid off on a schedule due, due to complete in 2037. But the borrowing is in, right now, short-term borrowing or bands, bond anticipation notes. Examples of past borrowing that the CPC has done to pay for large projects was the acquisition of the Benjamin Lincoln House in 2020, and the Hingham Heritage Museum project in 2013, but both of those projects have been paid off. So, next slide, please. The CPC budget for fiscal year '25 is, um, hopefully you can see those numbers okay, but basically, starting at the top for funding sources, the 1.5% surcharge on real estate taxes is $1,489,536. The state match from the CPA trust fund was $268,169. Then we add to that a second match from the CPA trust fund that the town received last year, but it was only available starting July 1st, so we use that, uh, as an extra, uh, payment from the trust fund this year in our budget, and that's 100, $101,125. Then last year, we had held over a surplus from our budget of $35,316, and then we have funds from closed projects totaling $20,450. So that gives us a total budget of $1,913,596. In the middle section, you can see that we calculate the 10% minimum that we have to spend per category, again, community housing, historic preservation, or open space. The calculation is based on our local surcharge, uh, the 1.5% surcharge, plus the payouts from the state, um, trust fund. So that total is a little bit lower than our total budget this year, and so based on that, $1.857 million, the minimum 10% payments per category is $185,783. And then you see that little note on the bottom next to the open space category is that the debt payment that we need to make on the Laner land purchase satisfies that minimum of 10%. The, at the bottom there, you can see that we, we only had one final application for this year's grant cycle, and that total was $1,055,229. And then I note again that for the Laner property, the minimum set aside debt payment for that is $237,397. So again, the 237,397 is higher than the minimum 185,783, so that's why we satisfy the minimum 10% for open space. So, next I have a, it's a list, uh, it's not a list of, we only have one application, so that's one true, quote-unquote, "project," but we have, um, payouts this year based on, um, number one, we have an administrative fund, and, um, I'll talk about that in a minute, but the, uh, final vote was for $40,000 for that. We have the Laner land debt payment. Again, the minimum is 237,397, and that amount is what was voted by the CPC, a majority of the CPC, to make that amount for the payment this year. Then we have the Hingham Community Playground. This is the one final application that we received for $1,055,229. Then we have to factor in the 10% minimum payment that we have to set aside. We restrict it for community housing, and that will go towards our budget next year in the category of community housing. And then again, we do a 10% mis, uh, set aside and restriction for historic preservation. That 185,783 will be rolled over into next year's budget. And so that left us with a surplus of $209,404. So, I'm going to get into some of these, um, next. Number one is the CPC Administrative Fund. Um, let's see. The CPA allows communities to spend up to 5% of their budget each year on fees associated with administering the CPA. So the request this year is for $40,000, which is 2% of this year's budget. And what we spend that on are membership fees to the Community Preservation Coalition, which provides consulting services to our CPC here on all kinds of questions that come up during the year about our applications and how we run a CPC. Other expenses would include legal fees, where, um, town council helps us on determination of eligibility of applications. Uh, this past year, we updated applications and our process manual. We, we work with, um, town council on the warrant article itself, so we pay for the legal work. We work with Town Council on the Warren article itself, so we pay for the legal work done for the CPC out of, using CPC funds. And then, any unspent ad, also, I would note that CPC has not had administrative support since 2019, but we've added into our budget for next year funds to help pay for admin support, because apparently, we are going to get some help from Town Hall, which would be great to help keep track of our, not only our application process and our forms, and making sure our website is updated, but once we give out grants on projects, we have to keep track of the money coming and going, and how these projects, we set up grant agreements, we're in constant communication with the applicants, or the grant recipients, recipients, rather, about how the project is going. This all takes time, and it's important for somebody in Town Hall to be able to keep track of the funds and how the projects are going once they're in process. So, that's the CPC Administrative Fund. Next up is our one application, and it is for the Hingham Community Playground. So, after 25 years, the community playground has reached the end of its useful life. And I'll note that this is a playground that's right behind this building right now, behind Town Hall, next to Cronin Field, and it's no longer meets today's safety codes and regulations. The surfacing is not accessible, the slides are cracking, their broken monkey bars have been removed, there's a broken tunnel slide, that's the picture on the left, I don't know if you remember, I remember my kids used to play in it, it was like a pretend ship, but there was a slide that went down. Well, that slide is broken, and they, and they, you can't just order a new, like, slide piece to fit right back into this old, it's just, they're not made like that anymore. So, anyway, the scope of the project would include removing all of the play equipment that was installed in 1999. The contractor would then install new landscape structures, play equipment, poured-in-place rubber surfacing, a shade structure, benches, picnic tables, and fencing. And the Recreation Department considers landscape structures equipment to be the most durable and safest equipment on the market. And the new playground would be installed in the fall of 2024. So, going to the next slide, this is one view of the proposed design of the new playground. The contract would install this new landscape structures play equipment, and, so that's one view, and then, if you want to go to the next view. The formal quote for a playground, all the work to demo the old and bring in this whole new playground is $1,376,386. And the Recreation Department's initial CPC funding request was just under $1 million, $917,000. But the town's last three recreation capital projects have been significantly over-budget. They received formal quotes from engineering and design firms, but even getting these professional quotes, there's no guarantee that the project will cost, what the project will cost until the bidding process is finished. So, an example of that is that the Hingham High School tennis courts is over-budget by $95,807. The Cronin Street Hockey Court, this project is over-budget by $47,845. And then, the Cronin Basketball Court is over-budget by $63,422. So, the Recreation Department is absorbing these, these overruns and the costs for those projects, but for this reason, the Recreation Department is formally requesting additional 10% general conditions fee, which is customary for large construction projects to cover costs related to project management, administrative duties, insurance, permits, bonds, transportation, and equipment rentals. So, that's my very long way of saying that the increase, now, the total request for this project is $1,055,229, plus the Recreation Department will still have to fundraise $321,157. So, I know this is very small print, and I'm very sorry. I, hopefully, the Advisory Committee and the Select Board have been sent a, this is laughing at me, this, the Warren article, maybe you haven't seen it yet, but the reason why I'm showing it to you in this, this one slide right now is just to give you an idea that I want to talk now for a minute about how this year's CPC article is different from other previous years in a structure, because we do have that one project, the playground, and then, we do have the administrative fund. But then, we also have some other business to conduct and add into the article itself that we would not have necessarily included in the language of the article itself. In the past, it would have been accounted for and written about in the comment. So, I'm going to take you through that. So, first, I'd like to note at this point that for these six questions on the CPC article, the Community Preservation Committee, with eight members present, voted unanimously in favor of all sections of the CPC article, with the exception of Section 3, which was a vote in favor of 5 to 3, which I will discuss in a moment. So, you can see at the very top, Section 1 of the article is the $40,000 for the Administration Fund. The second section is the Community Playground project, which I just discussed. The third section is the debt payment for the Lehner property. So, this is different from previous years in CPC articles. In previous years, when the CPC set aside funds to be used for the debt payment, the accounting for this set-aside was described in the comment of the article, not as part of the article question itself. When the CPC this year was considering making a larger debt payment using surplus funds, Town Council crafted the CPC article to include the debt payment as part of the project, or the list of projects. So, the question is to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $237,397 to be available for expenditure by the Select Board for the payment of bonds or notes borrowed for the community preservation projects. So, it's not voting for Annual Town Meeting to vote on the Lehner project itself, it's just appropriating the dollars that the Select Board will use to make the debt payment. And even though the CPC voted to make only the minimum payment instead of a larger payment, Town Council said it was fine to keep this language as part of the CPC article. And then, in the fourth and fifth sections, this is the setting aside of the minimum 10% funds restricted to community housing and historic resources for the CPC to use in a future budget. I did some digging around, I can't find a year, I haven't found a year yet that the CPC had to set aside funds to meet the minimum 10% requirement, because we've always had applications for these different categories, but this year is just sort of a odd year, and I think it's just a one-off that I don't think we'll see again. But that's reflected in the article that normally you would probably just explain in the comments, but again, it's just a nice transparent way the article is set up now, is that Sections 1 through 5, if you add up those dollar amounts, that gets you to $1,704,192. And then, when you add the surplus of funds from this year's budget that the CPC wants to put, roll over and to put into next year, if you add that $209,404, that equals the total budget of $1,903,596. So, this new format of the article allows for some transparency, rather than going through the comment to find out the information about the debt payment and the 10% set-asides. So, finally, I'm going to talk about the very last section, Section 6, which is different. So, if you can move to the next slide. This last section of the CPC article is not a project, and it's not an appropriation of money necessarily, well, it is an appropriation of funds, but I'll explain. It's a cleanup issue that came up recently from Town Council relating to the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust. So, the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust has been in existence since 2007. The trust funds its pursuit of affordable housing properties using the Opportunity Fund. The Opportunity Fund has been operating under the premise that CPC grants, CPC will grant them funds, they buy a property, they fix it up, and if they sell it, that the funds go back into the Opportunity Fund to fund future purchases or expenditures. And the Community Preservation Act funds are the sole provider of funds for this Opportunity Fund. So, from the comment in the warrant for Annual Town Meeting 2023, which was last year, and the CPC granted funds to the Opportunity Fund, I want to read that it says, "While Hingham has achieved its 10% minimum affordable housing requirement until 2030, the town continues to have unmet housing needs. The Hingham Affordable Housing Trust continues its efforts to purchase and develop affordable housing within the town, given the increasing and high cost of housing, the higher-than-average percentage of renters who are cost-burdened, and the gap in available housing for older and disabled residents. CPA funding is the primary funding source for Hingham Affordable Housing Trust. When Hingham Affordable Housing Trust purchases such a property, it applies for an affordability restriction from the Commonwealth's Department of Housing and Community Development. Once the restriction is in effect, Hingham Affordable Housing Trust sells or rents the property and places the proceeds back into the Opportunity Fund for future purchases and other expenditures." So, the reason why I'm telling you all of this is because, over the last several months, and then, in the next couple of months, the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust is in the process of selling five properties, which it acquired using CPA funds. Consulting the Community Preservation Act, Town Council has determined that the Community Preservation Act law is written such that the net sale proceeds are required to be returned to the town's CPA fund, not returned to the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust Opportunity Fund, as always assumed by the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust and the town and the CPC. So, the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust business model, so to speak, is to use the net sale proceeds to fund future purchases or other expenditures. So, a town meeting vote is required to appropriate those funds back to the Housing Trust. So, again, this Section 6 is a legal cleanup issue. In the future, any grants to fund the Opportunity Fund coming from the CPC can include language which could authorize the net sale proceeds to go directly back to the Opportunity Fund. Or, if the CPC wants to, the CPC could choose to not automatically convey funds back to the Opportunity Fund if there were a different set of circumstances, such as if the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust was dormant and not using the Opportunity Funds. So, that will be a question for future projects. So, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you, and does anyone have any questions?
Excellent. Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Erin, for being here. And thank you to the CPC, certainly Julie, under your leadership, there's been a lot of cleanup and organization and just wonderful process improvement, so thank you, we are very grateful. Thank you for taking us through this. Do you have any questions?
I always have questions for Julie.
Related to-
Related to this. Related. Okay. So, let me just start with the last discussion, where the proceeds are going, basically, going back to CPC, and then going now, then back to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes.
So, the relation of those funds, the transfer of those funds back to the Affordable Housing Trust, do they count as an expenditure under the affordable housing category, where we have to meet the 10%?
Not for this year, no.
But going forward?
That is a really good question, and I don't, I don't have the answer.
So, we don't have to decide that, I just want to make sure that we have that accounting issue handled.
Yep.
Going back to the playground, I can tell you, I'm not personally familiar with the playground, I'm wondering, how, how much use does it get?
Well, it gets a lot of use. I mean, we did a site visit at the beginning of November, and, you know, next to that playground is, are the soccer fields and baseball fields and the hockey court, hockey court at Cronin that is actually getting rebuilt, and the basketball court. It is, it was a beehive of activity that morning, I mean-
That's great.
Tons of, you know, you have older siblings playing soccer on the field, and then, you have littler ones who are in the playground, but it is, that's why, I mean, they're calling it in this application, Hingham Community Playground. This is the big central playground for the town.
Turning to, you talked about that we're going to be rolling over funds, there's a rollover of funds that we, if we didn't expend it in a category this year, we could roll them over to the following year.
Yep.
Is there a limit as to how many years we can do that rollover?
I don't think there is. So, if next year, we don't want to spend that whole amount, then I think we can roll it over to the next year.
Sorry, to go back to the, to the playground, do we have a budget for what the maintenance is on the playground?
Mark Thorell is probably on the call, and I know Vicki is as well, so.
Hi, thank you. Joe, for the maintenance, the playground is designed and built in a way where it's going to be pretty much maintenance-free. The surfacing will be poured-in-place rubber, which does not require annual maintenance. Certainly, we need to do annual inspections, stuff like that, but it's not like a daily or weekly maintenance, other than DPW helping us to pick up the trash from the trash bins.
I mean, this sounds like a great project. One final question, you mentioned that it was unanimous except for Question 3.
Yep.
And if you could just explain what the dissension was about?
Sure, I know, I thought I'd written that down. Do you want to speak tonight?
I was one of the dissenters, so I will just say that there was, a lot of us were kind of on the fence on whether or not the funds should be, you know, rolled over for next year that we could use towards whatever is going to come. I personally felt that it was the most fiscally responsible thing to do, to pay down more of our debt. There was pros and cons debated on that, and, you know, I think we decided that having the flexibility next year, since this year, it was only one grant, we kind of are expecting next year to be certainly more than one grant, and that was sort of the prevailing argument.
Got it. Thank you for the work. You've got one project, but I think it's a winner, so I think it's great. Thank you.
Thanks. Agreed. I think the Community Playground is a great project, and I'm also glad that you're keeping the administrative funds. I think that's important to keep us on the right track and organized. As far as, I know we talked about the 10% that would be rolled over for affordable housing, and that would be in addition to 10% of next year's budget, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Nancy, do you want to?
Thank you. It was a great presentation, and thank you, Julie. I know you walked in and have really straightened up a lot of the bookkeeping, et cetera. Good job. I don't have any questions, I think this is a great project. Spent a lot of time, not in the last 10 years, but previous to that, a lot of days on that playground, so it's a, it's a community treasure, so. Anybody else have any? Just see if any of AdCom wants to go first.
I just wanted to make a comment, I think it's such a great project, but also, I think your question about the maintenance brought up a great point. I remember historically having to replace the woodchips, I remember being shocked when it had to be done, how expensive woodchips are, because they had to be certain, you know, preservative or whatever it is on there, and it was something, I think, a few years back, to the tune of $17,000, just to replace the woodchip. So, I think this is a really sound move in the right direction in terms of, as you say, maintenance-free, I think that's great to hear.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from members of the public?
And we'll be back before the Advisory Committee next week. You cannot wait. Can't wait.
Sorry, just hoping this would count. Okay. Do we need to take a vote?
Yes, we do.
I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article L.
Second, we'll call the, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Advisory Committee is going to adjourn and reconvene upstairs, not adjourn. We're going to go to recess. We are going to reconvene upstairs on the third floor. May I come, please take your names tag with you? By a different Zoom.
Go to the right Zoom.
We're just going to finish up the Select Board meeting real quick.
Okay, thank you. No, you're fine. Next on the agenda for the Select Board meeting is public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment? Any members of the public that would like to make a comment? Okay. Next on the agenda is Town Administrator and Select Board Reports.
If I may, just one item. Looking ahead to next Wednesday, the 7th of February, we'll be sponsoring our latest blood drive at the Hingham Center for Active Living, formerly known as the Hingham Senior Center. Start time is 10:00 a.m., concludes at 3:00 p.m. And we certainly would welcome folks to take the opportunity to donate. There are different ways to arrange an appointment. The best way to do that is through the Red Cross website. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
So, as we prepare to issue both bonds and bond anticipation notes this week, or bands, I'm very happy to report that our AAA bond rating has been reaffirmed by Moody's and S&amp;P. Yay! And our MiG-1 rating on the bands has been reaffirmed by Moody's. So, I really want to thank Lori Magnner, our treasure collector, Anne McNaughton, our new town accountant, Erin Walsh, our Director of Assessing, Capital Markets Advisors, Tom Art, the Select Board, everyone on the finance team who helped us prepare for those calls, and really appreciate the great result.
And the band MiG-1 rating is also the highest available?
Yes, it is.
Tom?
No, no appointment, our reports tonight.
Joe?
Just like to add, thanks to you, Michelle, for all the work that you've done. It really shows, and thanks for getting us the AAA. No other reports.
Yes, thank you, Michelle, Lori, Erin, Anne, the whole team, but really with your leadership, Michelle. I was able to participate in one of the calls with the analysts getting us ready for the rating, and it was very impressive. Our team and staff was very well-prepared. What we were able to share and communicate about this community and the dedication of the people that work here, as well as the volunteers and the residents, as well as our fiscal responsibility and stability was really impressive. So, I was thrilled to be a part of that and thrilled to receive the ratings and the good news. So, thank you. Just want to reiterate, Lincoln Day is February 10. Everyone is invited to join in at, well, we start in the cemetery and then Old Ship Church. And just a note that next week, we will not be meeting on February 6. On the Tuesday, we will be meeting on Wednesday, February 7. It is a joint session with the school committee. And that's it. All right, anything else?
Just to add, really, that the bond rating also reflects the leadership of our two top leaders.